Well, good evening. Thank you for being here. I'm Nathan. I'm your Development Director here in town. We'll start, we'll go ahead and kick it off. And I know we have, we just have a lot, a large crowd tonight, but I think it's important that we still have a meeting and go over these updates, particularly for anybody that's online later on that watches this, wants to follow the conversation. So just to, just to bring everyone kind of up to speed, this UDC update that we're going to talk about tonight isn't anything new. It's a conversation that's been going on for, I would say, about a year now here in town. And so very briefly, last year, the city adopted a new comp plan. And naturally, when that happens, you want to look at your development code to kind of structure it in a way to meet the growth strategies of that comp plan. And so we've been talking about clearing up and clarifying various ports, parts which is our Unified Development Code. And so tonight, we'll, we'll discuss the draft that we'd like to have some more feedback on before we take it to P and Z and Council for Action. Tonight, if, if you are here, we do have comment forums. Feel free to jot down any comments, concerns that you have. We'll take those, review them, and see how we can get that incorporated into the plan. And then again, that goes back to P and Z and Council for Action. So again, tonight, we have presented this draft to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, on, really since January, we've been talking about things that they'd like to see, things that they had some, some issues with and wanted items clarified. I will tell you that when you go to amend your zoning ordinance, you, a lot of cities will do this annually. I think that's a good thing to do, to review it, to see how development is working. Here in Kennebale, it's been some time, probably 23, I think, that we did some text amendments. And all these are text amendments. So meaning we're taking the zoning, we're clarifying some language, but we're not changing anybody's zoning district out there, at least with this update. There will be some overlay districts that we'll talk about tonight that is similar to where we are installing overlay districts in strategic parts of town. And again, those parts, those areas that we've selected are based off of the conversation we've had with P and Z, the community, the comp plan, and again with council, and it'll get, and it'll go back to those bodies for action. Very briefly though, just want to give you a quick overview of what those updates include. And if anybody's watching online, make sure you click the like and subscribe. We'd like to increase that viewership. So these updates include revised spatial requirements for residential and home districts. So what that is, is when you have a zoning district, each zoning district has a minimum lot width, minimum lot depth, minimum square footage, rear, side, front yard setbacks, things of that nature. So we've, and I'll show these to you, what we're proposing here, again, based off the conversations been going on for the last year. We also have seen, we're proposing some revised residential lot areas to provide more consistency with existing lot width and depth. So what I mean by that, we're not, if we have, and we do have, established and already adopted minimum lot widths and depths. However, the square footages that make up that lot don't, it doesn't math, right? And so what we've done is we've tried to make that consistent throughout our zoning districts. So if we, if we say that your lot has to be a minimum 70 feet wide or 50 feet wide by 100, you know, like for example, in Old Town, well, that's a 5,000 square foot lot. In some districts here in town, you'd have a minimum lot width and a minimum lot depth with the square footage area that, that doesn't correlate to those lot widths and depths. So we've, we've made some revisions to that. It helps clarify for staff, but also people that want to build in town, well, what size lot do I need? You're telling me it has to be a minimum lot width and minimum lot depth in one part of your mount, you know, one part of, of the conversation, but you're requiring me to provide a different square footage that doesn't equate. So that's, we've been getting a lot of that in town. Revised land use definitions. What I mean by that is we've clarified some items. I'll go into what those are specifically. Expanded residential offerings in the Old Town District. So one of the, the comp plans, it talks about expanding residential types of housing in various parts of town. And so with this one, we're proposing just various residential offerings, again, in the Old Town District. And when we talk about Old Town, just for clarification, right now, our zoning has four subcategories. Old Town, one, two, three, and four. Our future land use plan just calls it Old Town. So in that sense, we're looking at Old Town as a district in and of itself. There are some subcategories within that, but when we talk about residential offerings, what's allowed in Old Town today? And it's, we have some offerings that are allowed in Old Town one and two, but they're not allowed in three and four. We have some that are allowed in three and four, but not allowed in one and two. And so a lot of the questions that we get from property owners in town and builders and developers is, why does that, why is that the case? So here, we try to make some simplifications in that. Allowing for accessory dwelling use by right in most residential districts. Now, this is ADUs, and something that I believe the state was actually pushing this last session. And actually, I don't know if that, that passed, but a lot of cities have gone to allowing ADUs by right. Meaning if you wanted to build a detached mother-in-law suite or detached living quarters, you had to, you had to obtain special permission. This is the case in a lot of cities. Here, we kind of want to get ahead of it. And we already have regulations that talk about ADUs. So you can't rent them out. You can't get a separate address for them. You know, or a separate meter. They have to be powered by a sub panel. But we have a lot of folks that have family members and parents that they want to move home back with them. But for one reason or another, they don't want them under the same roof, right? And so they, but they want them close by. And I could understand that, right? You want them close by, but maybe just not under the same roof. And so they want to build something in the back. Right now, there's just a little bit more red tape than usual. To get that done, that'd have to apply for a, a special exception through the Board of Adjustment that requires public notices to all the neighbors. There's a variety of different things they have to do in order to get that done. And so right now, because we want to expand residential offerings, dwelling units in, in town, we, I don't see a reason why not to allow ADUs by right. And again, in most residential districts, what I mean by that is our town home and our multifamily are residential districts, but it's not, it doesn't really make sense on a development side to allow ADUs in those zoning districts. But what we're talking about is our typical AG agriculture, R1, 2, 3, and 4. If you have the space for it, to put an ADU in your backyard, again, for that parent or that college student or something like that, then we're proposing that to go ahead and allow folks to do that, given they meet certain conditions that we already have established. Meaning they got to have certain distances from the home, have to have, you know, a certain square footages, meet code. And again, like I mentioned, we, we have a provision in our development code right now that says ADU. You can't list it on Airbnb, right? That's the number one question I'm going to get. You can't rent that out, you know, to get, you know, turn it into a rental or anything like that. So we have a provision in zoning that already prohibits a lot of those. But, you know, for grandma or whoever, we feel that that's a, a good, allow property owners to do what they feel they need to do. Codified our lighting and short-term rental requirements. So in this, we have separate standalone ordinances that, that regulate short-term rental and that regulate lighting, or more specifically, nuisance lighting. So now what we do is we've included that language and referenced that language, those ordinances within the development code. You have to understand is that when you pull up a city's ordinance, you're hoping to go to one location, hopefully, and get everything that you need. In Kennebale, that's not the case. The development code is about 400, 400 pages plus. And you have to then click all these links that, from various ordinances that have passed throughout the, throughout the various years to find certain regulations, specifically for lighting, which is the newest one, and the short-term rentals. And so in the existing code that we have, there's, I don't believe there's even a reference to short-term rentals, but we do have that referenced in this new code update. Moving forward, we, in, in this draft, which I'll show you where to find it here in just a second, online, we have established transit-oriented, a transit-oriented mixed-use district. It's an overlay district. And I actually left out, but I should have added in there, the entertainment district. These are two terms that the comp plan discusses. Transit-oriented development, which is development near, for example, I'll just, top of my head, the Oak Crest addition behind the QT in town. Located right there by the, the highway, there are plans for, there's a railroad there. So if the city ever gets a rail stop there, transit-oriented development would be those types of uses that would accommodate that type. So housing, commercial offerings, you know, restaurant use, where you can live, eat, play, and then hop on a train and go into town, go into Fort Worth for work or wherever it is that you need to get, or it can go the opposite direction, you know, like if, if something gets built in Mansfield or whatnot. There's also another area in town, which is in the Old Town District, that the city owns. Some piece of land that's adjacent to the rail that may see some, some sort of train stop there. If anybody recalls, you know, if you've ever hopped on the train in downtown Fort Worth and taken that train to Grapevine, and you go do a bunch of shopping and eating down there, then you hop right back on, go down back home to Fort Worth. It's kind of that same, same idea with transit-oriented development. Now, on that established rail, I won't mention the specific areas, but there are cities that elected to say, hey, we don't want to stop in our town. And some cities had said, well, we do want to stop in our town. Both cities still got the rail, still have to contend with the, with the passenger rail going through. But, but some cities have gotten the benefit of development that occurs around those train stops. Have gotten the benefit of the tax revenue that comes around those rail stops. And so the, the discussion that's been going on in town is, well, if that's the plan here in Kennebale, let's go ahead and create an overlay district to accommodate some of those future uses. We also included design standards. And so we'll go, the, the draft, I'll highlight a little bit of what those are specifically. With this draft, we have established requirements for vape, vape, tobacco, and hookah establishments. I do, we do have a handful in town, but I do get calls, folks in town that maybe have some concerns about some of these establishments. And they've been to other cities that they pop up on every corner. And so with this, having that, kind of that foresight on that, is that something that, that we, we want to address or make mention of in our development code? And so we've, we're working with our consultants in the conversation, again, with P and Z, is to go ahead, include some standards and some regulations, distance requirements between those types of shops that exist, anything new that pops up. So we've gone ahead and added some language in this update that talks specifically about those particular uses. We've expanded mixed-use offerings in the commercial districts. And so when I talk about mixed use, like we've been talking with P and Z, a mixed use is not just one commercial, not just residential or single-family residential, but it's a, it's a, it's a combining of the two, right? So you, you would see maybe a commercial offering down below, coffee shop, a restaurant, retail space, and maybe some dwelling units above that. And that could be a couple stories. Those could be lofts. Those could be other commercial offerings. But that's the intent of a mixed use, is we wanted to create a mixed-use offering in our commercial districts. Up in town, the park, up and down the parkway, we have a lot of commercial zone property. And hearing with, from property owners specifically, not developers or builders, but people that own property here, either they're looking to sell it or they want to build it, but they, they want to do something unique in, in town. And so this would allow for that to happen. And again, we have certain design standards. So it's, it's a mixing of the two along the parkway. So the intent of that, again, is to provide some mixed use up and down the parkway. Whilst still, I will say this for the record, whilst still remaining our strong and robust industrial and existing uses that we do have on the south end of town. So we're not trying to zone anything away. I will say this as well, that with this update, we have looked intentionally to not create any non-conformities. Meaning what you can do today, you can do tomorrow when this happens. When this, what we, what we're simply trying to do is allow for other types of uses. And again, a lot of that is at the request of a lot of our property owners in town, as they want. Well, I want to do this, but I also want to do that, right? And so it's just allowing for other types of uses. But there's also, it's also intentional in the sense that we want to encourage other types of uses. Not by prohibiting certain things, but by incentivizing or allowing for these other types of uses to happen naturally. We have looked, again, revised commercial design standards for mixed-use development, kind of going that. So if, if you're, if the city will allow for maybe like an loft of some sort above a commercial use, well, what do, what do we have in place to make sure that that bottom floor stays commercial, right? That, that it doesn't turn into just another apartment unit or something like that, maybe that somebody doesn't like. Well, the design standards speak to that, right? So that minimum top plate, the minimum height of a first floor on a mixed-use commercial building would be ample space for commercial, but it's not necessarily conducive for residential use, right? So this is what we're talking about when we talk about commercial design standards for mixed-use development. We have included vehicle barrier and guard requirements for elevated parking surfaces. Okay, so what we mean by that is if we have a parking lot that is in town, maybe sits up higher than other parking lots. Currently, we do not have a requirement to put a guard rail, a vehicle barrier, tire stops. We have an option to put either a tire stop or a raised curb, but not a guard rail. And we've had some, an instance in town where that was needed. We just didn't have it as a requirement. So with this update, we've gone ahead and included that in our development code to where parking surfaces. Now, I'm a building code guy. The, the building code speaks very clear about parking garages and vehicle barriers, but is silent. The, the, the building code itself does not speak to elevated parking surfaces. So let's say we had a parking surface that was, maybe there was a foot difference between where you park a car and maybe the adjacent grade on the other side. The code now, the development, this development code would require that, that property owner, that builder there to put a vehicle barrier along that elevated parking surface. And then lastly, we have simplified plat inside approval. Authorities or development code requires plats to go through P and Z, then council, and, and it extends the timeframe on approvals significantly. Although the state has said that cities could approve these plats administratively and really reduce that timeframe. And so what we've, what we've proposed is that replats, we still have to notify folks after property gets replatted. But amending plats, minor plats, don't have to go to P and Z and City Council for approval. We'll still plan ongoing, taking a preliminary plat and a final plat to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So there's still, you'll still have an approval body that is looking at development in town. But it just, it reduces that last step and just pushes it back to where we feel that it's more appropriate. Your planning and zoning commissioners, they're, they're the ones that should be looking at plats, reviewing those types of plats. Now, this is, does not include any plan developments. So plan developments is a zoning change. There are site plans that are a part of a zoning change for a plan development that will still obviously go to City Council. So this is just an overview, a highlight of what those updates include. Here's where you find it, and I'll show you, I'll walk you through it. So if you go to the Community Development web page, if you go to the city's website and you go to departments, if you just select Community Development, you'll get a page. And if you click down where it says Unified Development Code, this is where, this is what you'll see. Now, here's all those ordinances I was telling you about, right? That not only do you have to look at the existing code, but you also have to read all these ordinances. Just make sure you didn't miss anything. And so if you can imagine, if you're the planner in town or you're trying to build something, or you're a property owner, right? And you're just trying to put a fence up, you've got to contend with all these different documents. So again, we're, we're hoping to simplify things. And right on this page, you'll see that we've noted, hey, this has been an ongoing discussion with P and Z. Here is the, the summary of kind of what these updates include. And if you want to view the draft, you can do that today. And so we have the draft up there. In fact, since I've uploaded this, I've already found two or three items, typos that I need to get fixed. And so for those of you who are wordsmiths online or here, feel free to jot me down a note and bring that to my attention, and we'll get that corrected. Again, if there's a comment or something, something that you're not liking, we can, we can certainly take a look at that. And so what I want to do right now is just walk you through where you find that, where you find the draft. So again, I'm on the city website right now. Go to our Community Development page, and you can do this from your phone. So those of you who have a tablet or a phone, you can pull this up right on your phone. So here's our Community Development page, and you can click it both on the left and right side of the screen. Here, if you click UDC, here's that, here's that page, okay? If you want to compare and contrast what the draft is compared to the existing one, here's the existing document. You're welcome to look at it. We've made it easy. So when you click the draft, we decided to make sure every change, everything in there was highlighted in yellow and in red. So if you see something in yellow or red, we've made a change, right? I will scroll down to, we've clarified definitions in there. Here's the land use table. So in the current edition of our development code, each zoning district has a table. What we've done now is we've just put all those tables in one area. Instead of having to flip to every chapter to find the use that's just specific to that chapter, even though it's the same table, we've just tried to make it easier for everybody. And, and for Tina in particular, I'll tell you, she's our planning tech, and she, if you notice, this is your development code right now. And so we've just tried to make it life easier on everybody. Hopefully that's not too controversial. But the, the way the table is laid out is along the top, you have your zoning districts, and on the left, you have your land uses. Now, each one of these land uses has a specific definition on the back of the book. If you notice something highlighted in yellow or red, if it's red, there's been a clarification of that definition. If it's yellow, it's typically an addition to that zoning district. So if you'll notice in this first one, we've added a new column here, which is TODMU, right? Transit-oriented development mixed use. And so what we're doing is we're just calling attention to the zoning district overlay and the things that would be permitted. So if you go up and down this column, everything's going to be highlighted in yellow because that's a brand-new column. Same thing with our commercial districts. And if you notice, there are certain, certain changes, again, in the, and we're not removing anything, but we've added additional uses with and we're not removing anything, but we've added additional uses within the Old Town District. So, let's say someone wants to do a bed and breakfast, certain parts of Old Town, kind of our historic part of town, which is what you would typically see in your historic parts of town, Old Towns. I just got back from New Orleans, went down to the Garden District, a couple of different places, and you see all sorts of fun stuff down there, right? That's where you'd be able to do that. So, I encourage folks to just take their time, particularly the decision-makers in town, and review these. We've clarified these definitions in the back of the book, right? Restaurants without a drive-through, where are we permitting those? Well, we've gone ahead and proposed to allow those in our Old Town Districts, majority of them except for Old Town one. And that's because a lot of these Old Town 3 and 4s are adjacent to the highway, so we don't feel that that would be so much heartburn in town. But I want to go back and scroll through the residential offerings in town. If you notice, when you get into, oh, I didn't mention this, but on the top-left corner, there's the category of uses, right? So, we've grouped all the uses, all your institutional uses, your entertainment uses, your residential uses are all in that same category. So, here, again, we've tried to clarify some of these definitions. Here's a new one in town, is an energy storage system, right? Where would that be permitted? Oh, and let me go ahead and explain what these letters mean. I should have did that early on. If you see a P, it means it's permitted, means you could do it. If it's an S, it means special exception. You got to go to the Board of Adjustment, there's public hearings involved. And if, again, you'll notice a lot of these Ps and Ss haven't changed, they're not highlighted. That's the way it is today, right? So, rather than removing something in there that would create a nonconformity, we don't want to do that. So, if you see a C, that's a conditional use permit, so they have to apply and go before a different body, which would be the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then City Council. An S is simply a hearing before the Board of Adjustment, and for that, there is a public hearing that would be involved. If it's blank, that means it's not permitted. So, when you're at home, and maybe you're having a hard time falling asleep, and you wanted some reading material, I recommend this. And maybe you learned something about the town as well, what you can and can't do in different parts of town, right? Happy to be of assistance. And let me scroll down to the residential offerings, because I anticipate if we have any heartburn, it's going to be that here in town. Why? I don't know, but that's life. Here, our residential offerings here, you'll notice that we've clarified the ADU, and this is what I mean, permitted by right in most zoning, in most residential districts, right? So, we've added that P in there. We've left it off of the duplex, multifamily, and the townhomes, only because those sites itself allow for more lot coverage, and it just doesn't seem feasible, I think, to do that, to have ADU behind a duplex, right? But in your backyard, single-family home, why not? Apartments, multifamily apartments, you'll notice that in Old Town 3 and 4, we've added the Ps there. Now, this isn't new. However, I will say this, previously, they were permitted, the city years ago removed those from an ordinance out of the Old Town Districts. We have put them back in, because part of the comp plan says to allow for more residential offerings in the Old Town District. I want to move on there, too, but if that changes, then that changes. If we hear from the community, P&amp;Z or council, I just need to know where you want the Ps, where you want the Ss, and then we can get it done for you. Quadplexes. You'll notice these quadplexes, duplexes, triplexes, they're all in red, there's a specific definition. And earlier, I mentioned about how we simplify land use definitions, particularly when it comes to how we define dwelling units. The current version that we have says that a multifamily dwelling, a multifamily project is when you have three attached units or more. However, I have triplexes that are allowed in certain parts of town, I have quadplexes that are allowed in certain parts of town. So, which is it? Is it a triplex? Am I to look at that as a multifamily apartment complex? Or when you see a triplex, often you'll see them, like, imagine three townhomes back to back. Is that truly an apartment complex? And I'd say no. So, we've clarified that definition. Now, you can build those in Old Town today, in certain subcategories, a triplex and a quadplex. What we've done here is we've just said, hey, let's just see if folks want those all over Old Town. If not, let us know, happy to make a change. So, again, that's the land use table, you're welcome to go through it at your leisure. As you continue scrolling, you'll get to the spatial requirements that I referenced earlier. And so, with these, what we've done is we've tried to make some changes that are more, make more sense in the development world for a townhome. Our current regulations require that a townhome be on a 40-foot lot. It doesn't work for townhomes. Most of the time, you see a townhome, you don't see an adjacent garage that's next to it, front-facing. You will see those out there, but there's a lot of developments in town, and what they do is they rear-load it, so they put it behind. And so, you don't need that wide of a lot. So, what we've done is we're proposing a, and this is working with our consultants, working with P&amp;Z and the development community about what makes the most sense out there. And so, that's the number we've come up with, 22 by 88, which is consistent in our region for a townhome district. Here's another example of the minimum lot widths. Why it's red, it's existing, we haven't made any changes to that. What we've changed is this number. This number used to be the same as this number, 87.50 for an R4. But the minimum lot width today is 70 by 100, so we've just made the math work. So, that's what we've done there. Now, we've done the same with these other districts here. 100 by 125 will get you that. Same thing. 80 by 100 will get you that number. Those numbers were different, right? AG property, I want to highlight this. So, the minimum lot width and a lot depth is 80 by 125. We have a lot of property in town that is AG, zone agriculture. Now, currently, you need it in an acre if you're going to be on city sewer for AG property. However, we have a lot of area in town where we may have public sewer available. And so, the reason why you need an acre for septic is that's a county requirement, you need a minimum acre to have a septic system. It doesn't make sense, though, however, if you have public sewer available. So, if you have public sewer available, we simply created that number based off of the minimum lot width and depth, and that'd be something that you could subdivide your property by right, as long as it meets these spatial requirements. We have made some changes to the building height. That used to say 40, I think. Now, it says 35 for building height. 35 feet is really tall for a home, I'll tell you. But that's consistent with the area in town. I also want to highlight this, is that we looked at ways in our residential districts to allow for multiple accessory buildings. I've had a number of people that own property that's zoned R3, but they've got a couple acres, and they want to build a shed back there, but they got one already there. And I have to tell them, sorry, the code says you can only have one shed back there. They say, well, I got 10 acres. I understand that, but the code says you have to have, you can only have one. So, now, what we've tried to do is allow folks to have maybe more than one shed back there, if they have the space to do that. So, that's where a lot of that's driven from. Moving on, again, you'll notice anything in yellow is new, or it's been revised, that language has been revised. I know I'm going pretty fast, let me know if I need to slow down. I want to get to the transit-oriented development. It's Article 5, and... So, Article 5, or Chapter 5 of this book, the existing book, is where we previously mentioned the village districts. And we still have that referenced in this update. What we've done is we've taken anything that's zoned urban village or neighborhood village, which we do have property out here that's currently zoned that way, and we've put it in an appendix. And that's important, because as those buildings or those properties go to develop, we don't want to create a nonconformity. So, we still have a standard that they can follow. But we've replaced it with this transit-oriented mixed-use district here. And again, this will highlight what those requirements are going to be. It talks about minimum lot areas and depths for, new terms, villas, which are new to Kennedale, but not new in development, villas, row houses, townhomes, and there's two types of townhomes here, noted in the transit-oriented development district, mixed-use district. So, again, providing a variety of residential offerings there. Homes are getting more expensive, land is getting more expensive, and so, the market is adjusting to that by, well, maybe you don't need a 3,000-square-foot home for $500, $600,000, you know? Maybe you just want 1,500 square feet, right? Starting homes, starter homes, entry-level homes, things like that. That's where this district, now, this isn't citywide, again, this is in specific parts of town. So, again, like we mentioned, certain parts of Old Town centered around rail, the Oak Crest Edition, which is right there by the highway, and then any other areas that I get direction on from the community, I'll say, we're happy to take a look at that. But here, in this chapter, this is a new chapter, the number's not new, but the content of it is, but it has spatial requirements. And this is important, because a picture tells a thousand words. You know, on my previous screen, I had probably 10, 12 different bullet points, that's a lot of text, that's a lot for people to have to try to follow. But if I could show them a picture of that, that communicates a whole lot better. So, one of the things I enjoy about this is that as a, when I'm communicating, or when we are communicating this information to property owners and developers, builders, I can just provide them a graphic that depicts what those depths are, the space between the homes, things of that nature, okay? Here's one of the typos. Article 17 Erosion Sediment Control is on throughout this document, I will get that removed, that's bugging the heck out of me. But Article 5, again, please go through that, let us know what you like, what you don't like. Happy to have that conversation. A majority of this document, you'll see, hasn't been changed. Floodplain management, everything like that, that's all the same. Here's the information about the, Section 11 in this book has specific use standards. And so, because we're talking about these types of uses, here are the standards that are specific to those uses. The same applies for, let's say, if you had a salvage yard, let's say you had a dumpster enclosure, what are those specific standards? You can find that in there. Parking, we've done our best to look at parking and try to make it make more sense. I think we have too much parking, really. When you go to a Walmart, very often, it is an empty parking lot, except for a couple rows up front, unless you're there on a special holiday. But anybody ever been to a Sears lately? You know, or a large big-box store that that parking lot is completely empty? What we want to do is try to reduce parking requirements to allow for more development, or commercial development. The last thing I want to do is tell a business owner that he wants to open up a business, but his two parking spaces short, and he doesn't have the space to provide it, so I can't approve that. And so, what we've tried to do is try to reduce parking requirements with that in mind, right, to try to make it a little easier. In fact, if you recall during COVID, a lot of cities were saying, businesses were going out of business, they were leaving, and they said, hey, they identified parking as a big hindrance, so they suspended or reduced their parking, or got rid of it entirely. And then, those businesses and mom-and-pop shops, bakeries, things like that, came back, or allowed for them to come back. So, again, you'll notice these are in red, these are revisions from the current standard. And then, lastly, I'll get into... Also, you'll see a lot of this in yellow, we've included a lot of the state, changes that the state has in the local government code, so we've referenced that appropriately, included that in the development code. It'll be, it's not new because it's state law, but it's just new in the document. Use of groundwater, a lot of this, again, is referencing local government code, changes in the local government These are all land use definitions. I think I'll move forward on that, then. So, what are the next steps? Well, right now, I'll tell you why, initially, we wanted to take this to P&amp;Z here in June. It's going through a current legal review right now, because the state made a bunch of new changes. And so, we want to incorporate those changes, but we were welcome that news, that they, we needed to hold off a little while longer so that we can get more feedback from the community. So, here are the next steps, is that we plan to take these UDC amendments to P&amp;Z in July, and then to council in August. And so, there'll be notice that goes out in the community, we're looking at probably sending out a postcard to everybody. By law, when we do a text amendment to zoning now, we have to notify every property owner. That doesn't mean the tenant or the person that lives there, means the property owner. And please do us a favor as a staff, get with your appraisal district to verify that you have the right address on file, and that your forwarding is correct, because we do hear from time to time where people don't have, didn't get a notice, but that's because their address is wrong with the appraisal district, and we've been able to confirm that real time with them. And so, let's avoid that. The next step, again, is that these UDC amendments have to be formally adopted, and they have to go to these two bodies for official action. I don't anticipate any major changes, but that could change, obviously, because we're still in draft mode. And then, the next step is that the city will need to take steps to install those overlay districts, specifically for the transit-oriented development mixed-use and the entertainment district. Entertainment district. And so, we're still awaiting some more feedback on where in town we want to see those installed. So, we're hoping that the community provides us any feedback on that. And if you have any comments or questions, just for record, you can always reach out to me, come by the office, there's my email address and my phone number. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody present has. And does anybody want to say anything or speak now? No? Okay. Well, if you have anything, please, I welcome your comments, feedbacks. If your penmanship is like mine, maybe you don't want to write, or maybe you're better a typer or a texter, feel free to do that as well. Send me an email, and I will get back to you, okay? But again, hey, I want to thank you for being here tonight. It means the world to us as a staff, to have the community come out. And I didn't put this on the, this is already here, I don't care for monkeys much off, but please forgive me on that. But I look forward to hearing your feedback, okay? All right. Well, hey, thanks for being here tonight.